Welcome to the Monday, May 6th, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. I call this meeting to order. There will be no executive session this meeting. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify yourself for the record by saying your name and city of residence. Seeing none, now I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Thank you. And the salute to the flag. That is me. I will lead us in the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have on our agenda the school committee members and student reports. We have school committee chair report. There is no report at this time. We have reports of the resource subcommittee. Mr. Stevens?
The resource subcommittee, there wasn't much. We did just go on over the budget, but that's going to be discussed tonight. We also, our enrollment, we did not get the enrollment in building needs into your packet for this time. But when you do get your enrollment update where it says the plus two students, that's a little misleading. There were actually 29 new students, but there were 27 who graduated from Goodrich. So that it's really, it was an influx and we lost the graduation. We had some donations to accept, which are on tonight's agenda, and grants to submit, which is on tonight's agenda. That was it for the resource committee.
Okay, very good. Do we have any?
For school building, we had an update on Crocker Field, which is going to be starting probably in the next week or so. Yep, they'll be tearing it up. We reviewed our building use, and that's ongoing. And we had review our architectural on the HVAC, where's the problem with the bidding and which we're going out to bid again. Want to elaborate anymore on that, Mr.?
Yeah, so we're really in a good situation with South Street Roof, Fitchburg High School front door set, which is a pretty involved project, walk-in freezer, number of other things. The HVAC projects at this time are being repackaged to go out to bid again. We're not able to secure a bid from a general contractor or an HVAC contractor. Some theories about that. It's a tight timeline to do a large project. It's hard to do that type of work when school is in session. So looking at some, got some good feedback from a few of the general contractors in that field. And again, answer advisory, our project manager should have those out to bid within the next week or two. And, you know, we'll see how it goes at that point.
I think if there should be any more holdup on the HVAC situation, we also have other projects that, I guess you'd call them shovel-ready to go if that doesn't happen. So that's all used with Esser money. So we will have that money expended in the proper time. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I have one. Someone asked me today if we anticipate that Crocker Field will be completed by the time football season starts and what would be the alternative site if it extended into football season?
So if I'm correct, Jeremy, the hope is to have it done by September. And I think our first home game is not scheduled until October, correct? Or the last week of September?
Yeah, so the substantial completion date for the contract, August 16th. Them starting a little bit earlier gives a buffer, particularly if it's a rainy summer. And the athletic department has scheduled as many possible away games for the beginning of the season so that by the end of September, which should be more than, I mean, at that point, the company is well beyond their contracted required date to be completed. So that would be like worst-case scenario. But realistically, if things hold true, we have some rain, you know, it's a typical summer, August 16th. And for football, field hockey, soccer, constant activity down there.
Yeah, we're looking at boys and girls lacrosse and soccer. And getting everybody on there. Yep, so looking, looking good.
Expanding the opportunity.
Yes, yes, oh, definitely. Look, and we'll be holding a big opening event, and we're hoping Mr. Kraft is going to come. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on that.
Exciting.
Sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Policy subcommittee.
Okay, we met on April 24th, and we continued our work with Section B, made some great progress there. We'll be meeting again on May 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 at Central Office. And we will be working again with Tracy Novick from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to continue. That's it.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the student support subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have a report. However, I would like to know the date of the funeral for the student over at Goodrich Academy. I would like to show my condolences. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Okay, school personnel subcommittee. We have no report at this time. Student representative report.
AP testing has begun this week at FHS and will continue through this week and next week. So good luck to all students taking AP tests. The F, the Fitchburg Public School relays are tomorrow, May 7th, at 5:30 at Crocker Field. The FHS Scholars Banquet is on May 8th. The venue is Great Wolf Lodge. The FHS Prom is on May 11th at the Doubletree Hotel. And the high school spring concert, which features the band, jazz band and chorus, is on May 9th at 6:00 PM at Fitchburg High School. And the middle school spring concert is on May 21st. Oh, and the alumni award ceremony is at FHS on May 15th.
All right, great. Thank you.
Reminder again that May 15th, the Alumni Association, we will be making awards to 150 students of both Fitchburg High School and Goodrich. So any of you Fitchburg High School graduates out there, please attend. Don't make me the oldest graduate there again. Yes, yeah, some of you show up. It's a, it's a great night to recognize our graduates who are going to go on to college. And something new this year we're doing that my friend, Mr. Newcomb, who has passed away, we had talked about giving an award to our young service people going into the service, young men and women who are going to be joining, and we'll be giving them an award who would join the service. So, May 15th, look in on FATV if you can't make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments on student representative report? Okay, seeing none. Next on our agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of April 22nd.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second? Motion and second to approve the minutes?
Point of order?
On the motion?
On, yes, on the, on the motion. There is a section that needs to be amended on the minutes that we can just piggyback with it.
Okay.
On the final page regarding the Crocker School security system.
Page seven?
Yep, page seven, two paragraphs above number nine.
About the new Crocker School?
Yes.
And what would you like to?
It says, "Explained that request is to make certain that new Crocker School has the same security system as the old Crocker School." And it should actually, as I understand, be to, be equal to the other upgrades of the other schools within the school system.
That's accurate. Yep, so it should be, has the same security system as the other seven schools in the district as of the end of this coming summer when the, the new system is installed. That, that's a good catch. Thank you.
Good catch.
Okay, so a motion to amend the minutes?
Yes.
Out second.
Okay, motion second to amend the minutes. All in, a motion?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so we have the amended minutes before approval of the amended minutes of the school committee.
Make a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the amended minutes? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, next, we have communications. There are none at this time. Then we have public comment. Public comments of no more than five minutes in length were offered to be submitted to the superintendent by email. None were submitted, correct? Okay, I now invite anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to please approach the podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you're free to make public comment of no more than five minutes in length. Okay, oh, all right.
Hi, my name's Ayanna Lewis. I'm a Fitchburg student. I go to Fitchburg High School. I am also a proud member of BSU. I came here to talk about the April 1st committee meeting that we watched as a group. I want to say first that my opinions are completely and solely mine. I don't represent BSU and their beliefs on what happened. But I wanted to talk about Ms. Reynolds and your comments on us gaining funding for our BSU trip to DCU, DC to visit Howard. You made comments that I personally felt were inappropriate and irrelevant to the situation that you were calling for. We were asking for funding for a college trip. We weren't asking for you to be a political superhero, but in that moment, you felt as if it was appropriate to ask the definition of black people, which I feel as if you should know the definition as a someone who sits on this council. Also, considering that you sit in this position, I feel that you should be more educated on the people that you're supposed to represent. You represent people of color. You represent people who need you to understand what they're going through, even if you personally haven't experienced it. And to question the validity of a club that is meant to help support people of minority who every day experience things that are incredibly hard to describe in word, it's a little disappointing that we had to watch you make comments like that. I wanted to answer your question, however. Being black is an experience. It is not just how you live, it's not just how you eat, it's a culture. It's my mother, it's my father, it's my friends. It is the way in which I feel I should carry myself. That is the definition you were looking for. Being black is deeper than my skin tone. It's deeper than my genetics. It is my experience in my life. That is all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time. Also, thank you, everyone, for genuinely caring about the students in this town. And I am so incredibly thankful that there are people on this board who care about minorities in our education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rick Manet. Fitchburg Public Schools, Fitchburg resident, father of a couple of children that go to our school system, currently work over at Longs Joe. That segue is real brief. As you can see, Superintendent Thompson has put up the flyer for an event that I was asked to partner with, with Goodrich. So some positive, some positive. I know we've had a couple of school committees recent with some not-so-positive things coming out of Goodrich. But this is a positive. The school, the student council, the student government over at Goodrich asked me to help them put together a three-on-three basketball tournament to fundraise for end-of-the-school-year activities such as their field day and trips, that sort of thing. We are going, we open it up to all Fitchburg Public School students in six different divisions from grade six through 12, so the middle school through the high school, both boys and girls. It's $60 a team, up to four players on the team. That is going to, that event is going to take place at Longs Joe Middle School on May 18th and 19th. We figured having it right here at Longs Joe gives it, gives it access to all of the students in the Fitchburg Public School system. They will receive, all participants will receive a T-shirt. They will receive at least three games minimum, and, and there'll be trophy and championship shirts and whatnot for the, for the winners of each division. It won't be just a tournament champion, there'll be a tournament champion for all six divisions. They did, the student body has done a great job going out, doing some fundraising. And if any of your folks are out and about and decide that, you know, it would, could help, help them out and get, you know, get the word out a little bit more. Flyers have been put out at all the middle schools. It has been put on the social media. And, you know, on behalf of their student council, we want to thank you for, for supporting them, and hopefully we have a great turnout. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. We have superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a packed agenda this evening. Just a few updates before I get into the items on the agenda. Just a reminder that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank all our teachers for all the work and dedication to the students of Fitchburg. This week, each school have a variety of activities planned to honor teachers. In addition, we will have treats available in each school's faculty rooms on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to celebrate our teachers and educators. Thank you for all you do. And as James pointed out, tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00 PM, is the historic class relays at Crocker Field. Please make sure you stop down. This will be the last event before we begin renovations on the new field. So we hope to see everyone there tomorrow evening. And then last but not least for updates, there is an early release day this Wednesday, May 8th, for teacher professional development.
Could I add one to?
Absolutely.
Mr. Thompson, so I learn, much of what I learn, I learn at Dunkin' Donuts. And today I realize it is Nurses Appreciation Day.
Nurses Appreciation.
I just wanted to add that too, because we have a great.
That's on Wednesday, right?
It's, I think it was today, actually. I could be wrong.
And then last week was Principals Appreciation, I mean, Day. So every day is a new thing, and I have to get a calendar with all these events on it because I feel like I walk in and be like, someone says to me, "Guess what today is, Mr. Thompson?" And I sometimes have no idea, so.
It's also Mental Health Awareness Week.
It is, yep. So, lot going on. So, thank you. All right, our first announcement this evening, or our first presentation, is by the Blacks, the FHS Black Student Union Group. They're here this evening to talk about their trip to Washington DC and Howard University. Please come up.
Good evening, school committee.
You could sit at the table too, if you'd like.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up. I do have a slideshow. Was wondering where.
Actually, you should be able to open your computer and then use the HDMI cord to plug in.
Oh, that's beautiful. That is.
I'm hoping.
Preparedness. Again, good evening. My name is Theodamocenes. I am the advisor for the Black Student Union. And as, again, you guys know, we put together a field trip for cultural and educational immersion field trip to Washington DC with our senior members. I do have a slideshow, and then I'm going to let some of our students speak. And we also have one of our chaperones, Ms. Courtney Franklin, who came with us on the trip. You're more than welcome to speak if you'd like. So, let's hope this works. So, again, we have students who are willing to share their experience, and you guys can go in whatever order you'd like. Or I can pick.
My entire life, I was raised with strict parents and even extended family. We were raised, we were restricted from so many things for protection and even personal fears. To be able to go on this trip was the first step of me growing up. This experience has allowed me to become even more accepting of the skin I'm in, my hair, my fashion sense, and finally, my culture. This trip has allowed me to learn more about the history of fellow African-Americans in both the new and the old Americas. Things that were never taught in school, but probably should. This trip showed me that there is more than one narrative that should be told about the students and adults who went on this trip that isn't heard.
That's Ronald Latarion, senior.
I wrote something a little long. Hello, school committee members. My name is Zoe Graham, and I'm an active member of the Black Student Union. Today I came here with the purpose of talking about the experience I had in DC and the impact visiting different sites and museums, specifically the African-American Museum had on me. Firstly, I want to thank you all for giving me and the other senior students the opportunity to attend a trip such as this one. For the entirety of the Black Student Union's existence, we have dreamt of being able to make this trip possible for our group. And after two years of speaking with local resources and doing lots of research, we were finally able to make it happen, which wouldn't have been possible without you guys and the faith you had in us. Furthermore, I just want to say this trip as a whole was life-changing and super transformative for me, from touring Howard University to touring the Native American Museum. But what really shaped me and my experience was visiting the African-American Museum. The last time I was here, on April 1st, Ms. Reynolds asked a serious question, which for me held a lot of weight. She asked the BSU advisor, "Define black. What is black?" And if I'm being real, going to this museum has given me the space to confidently answer this question. And not for her or for any of you really, but for myself. As an African-American student, I don't think the adults in the school system really understand what it means to go through life not knowing where you come from, where your history lies, and what your family actually went through or built. Sure, we talk about slavery right when, when the calendar hits February 1st, then we might touch on Martin Luther King or Rosa Parks, but we don't learn anything else, which is all I really knew until going to this museum. The museum has given me the space to finally understand and be confident in my heritage. The museum broke down African-American culture through exhibits that showcased every single era of history that weren't only focused on slavery or segregation, but our foods and our fashion and our political leaders and our businesses and so much more. The museum also offered free online sources for people of African-American ancestry to connect with their family tree and find out where they come from beyond their parents or grandparents. After 12 years of being in this school system, it took me three hours in a 600,000-square-foot building to catch up on all those years of history unlearned. And now I stand here extremely grateful for the opportunity to further myself educationally and personally, because doing this aided in me finding the legitimacy in African-American culture and being African-American that I don't think I would have found otherwise. Again, thank you for this experience.
My name is Moses Sayuk. I'm a senior at FHS, Fitchburg High School, and I would like to talk about my experiences at DC. It was truly a great trip for me, especially coming from my background. I come from an African, strictly African background, and my parents don't really know as much about this country like that. We only know about our homeland and stuff like that. So going to DC and learning more about America and HBCUs was really an honor to, to go. So, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Franklin, you'd like to make some comments?
I'm Courtney Franklin. I teach at the high school. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to thank you for approving this trip. The amount of growth, maturity and insight I saw in the students in the debriefing sessions that didn't happen in the museums or didn't happen in Capitol, but over dinner or in rooms afterwards was amazing. Not only did they do themselves proud, they did this whole city proud. Thank you.
Thank you again, school committee, for approving the trip. I appreciate it. I also want to give a couple of shout-outs. One to Ms. Mary Alexander Molina, who helped me plan this. Jen Fisher was also helping until she was pulled away to other duties. Dr. Knight, thank you so much for being able to come and offer your observation and your insight as well. I want to say thank you to our chaperones, Ms. Franklin, and we had a parent chaperone who was able to come with us as well, as well as Cedric. I want to say thank you to our chaperones, to Ms. Franklin, and we had a parent chaperone who was able to come with us as well, as well as Cedric Robinson, who is, who works at Fitchburg High School. So I want to thank him and everybody else who was able to make this possible. So thank you so much for your time. Do you guys have any other questions?
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you so much. When is the next trip? I would like to be chaperone again.
Well...
It can be to Panama, you know?
Panama? Oh, well, I don't, I don't know if we got Panama money, but we'll try. I definitely will be planning this trip again. So I'll keep you posted.
Any other questions?
No, I would just like to thank Mr. Demostrosis for taking the students. My years as a principal, I've been a strong supporter of all of our students going on field trips. And I was one of the ones who started our eighth grade field trips about 39 years ago, I guess it was now. And I'm a big proponent of our students getting out. We have many, many students who are poor in this city and, you know, many of them are children of color. And we need to do everything possible to provide those opportunities for them to expand their horizons and go out and see the world. And then come back to Fitchburg and build on what you learned and make us a better place. When I graduated Fitchburg High School in 1958, do you know how many people of color were in my class? 225 students? Zero. None. And our, our students of color have been a great addition to this city. And thank you for doing that, coming back and sharing and showing we're not such a bad place to live. Thank you very much, and I will continue to support what you do.
Thank you. You actually reminded me of something that Zoe said. This trip was actually two years in the making. If you go back in FATV archives, I think it was right after we put on our first Black History Month showcase at the high school, which you guys should definitely check out. They were interviewed by Mayor Squala, who was Councilwoman Squala at the time, on her show. And I think one of the things that they brought up was the desire to go to Washington DC. And it was really the students who kept pushing, kept hounding, kept harassing me, until I said, "All right, let's try and do this." Because I, you know, I've never planned something of this scale to this degree, which is why, again, I want to thank you guys for pushing me because honestly, they were, planning something like this wasn't easy. And there were times when I was like, "All right, I think we just have to push this off to next year." But you guys had faith in me, you guys kept pushing me, so I want to thank you guys. And again, thank you, school committee, for making this possible.
Mrs. Jeffries, did you have a comment?
Yeah, when you initially came here, I said I wanted you to come back and share. And I'm just sitting here and I can't stop smiling. And the video was great, but hearing the three of you, it just sounds like it's so much more than what you expected and how personally you've been affected by it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It was wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Until next year.
Until next year. I'm gonna hold you to that.
All right, I would like to go out of order, if that's okay. I'd like to talk about the out-of-state field trips that I have this evening on my agenda. There's actually two out-of-state field trips on our agenda. I am actually going to hold off the out-of-state field trip to the Friendly Farm in Dublin, New Hampshire, until next school committee on May 20th. There was an issue that I needed to address today on that, so we're not ready to get permission for that quite yet, but we will be ready on May 20th, okay? But this evening, we have two teachers from Longs Joe Middle School, Shelby Gavin, I said it wrong again, I'm sorry, and Alexis Torrison. They are here to talk about the Appalachian Mountain Club, the AMC field trip that our middle school will be going on. Last year, if you remember, you approved this field trip and we actually had to cancel it at the last minute because AMC did not have the staff to make that happen. So we are here this evening to ask permission to attend the AMC field trip again this year. Shelby and Alexis, do you want to come up? Now, they have a brief presentation that they'd like to run through. If Zoom would work, it'd be a miracle. All right, just give me one second. All right, here we go. Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alexis Trojan, sixth grade math teacher at Longs Joe. This field trip is, stands, AMC stands for the Appalachian Mountain Club, which is a group that helps promote and protect the mountains, forests, waters, and trails in the northeastern United States. It also stands for a mountain classroom, so it's a place where we can get our kids out into nature and learn more about that type of stuff.
Yep, and a lot of our kids haven't been up in the White Mountains. They haven't been hiking. So the Appalachian Mountain Club is able to provide a lot of the gear that our kids may need. Hiking boots, rain pants, hats, gloves, just a couple of things that, that the kids might not have as they're packing. These are just a couple, some pictures of the AMC trip that happened a few years ago.
So it's a really great trip because, like we were saying with the last group, it gives them an experience to get out of Fitchburg and experience something new that they might not have. We will leave Wednesday, May 22nd. It takes about three and a half hours to get up there. Like Ms. Gavin was saying, was that we, they get provided all that extra hiking gear and stuff like that that might not be available to them. And they'll be staying over two nights to return for normal dismissal on Friday. Pictures from the past.
So when the kids go up to, to the Highland Center at Bretton Woods, they're going to share a room with three of their friends. It's two bunk beds in the room. The bathrooms and showers are on the one floor. Our kids will have the whole floor to themselves. There's a breakfast buffet, family-style dinner. We get to eat lunch on the trail while we're out hiking. So the hiking is an all-day event. And the AMC guides will let us know the best spots to have lunch.
So this is some pictures of the lodge, where we eat, where they sleep. Just a nice little space for them.
And it's the, it's the Highland Center at Bretton Woods.
Do you know how many student, other students might be there?
Not off the top of my head, but we will have the whole floor just Longs Joe. So we will be at our own space and all our activities are just us.
So we're going to spend the three days that we're up there hiking. Even the last day before we leave, we have a small hike to take the kids on. They're going to be, this is mostly a science curriculum. They're going to be learning about geology, ecology. There's also a little bit of earth and space science. They're going to do some star stories at night around our campfire, which is all part of the sixth grade science curriculum. There's also team-building activities for the kids. And again, just the great scenery.
Yeah, throughout the day, they get those social, emotional learning thrown in there as well. And then these pictures are actually from before COVID, so that was the last time we were able to actually go on this trip. Because like we were saying earlier, it got canceled last year because they couldn't get the staff. So what we're going to do, it's again, it's team-building, learning about the local wildlife, fun, being with your friends, doing new activities that they might not have the opportunity to do.
And when we're out hiking, so there are 27 kids that have signed up for the trip. There are five adults, four teachers at Longs Joe, and one administrator. So it's about a five-to-one ratio for kids to adults. And on the hiking groups, there is one AMC guide, one staff member, and then six to seven kids per group. We, you want to talk about the nurses?
Oh, yeah. So we will not be bringing our Longs Joe nurse with us, but each staff member is first aid and wilderness certified for safety care, as well as the AMC place having trained EMTs. They might not be with us, but they will be available to us.
And the parents are aware, aware that they, there won't be a nurse on, on location or going with them, correct?
Yep, we have reached out to parents and we said that, and even students who have that concern, they've had the opportunity, if they wanted to join us, those parents as well. So some of our evening activities.
Sorry?
Oh, no, you're fine. No, that's just what we were saying. That's the star stories, so really learning about those. And then campfires, smores, more team bonding. But a typical day, they're going to wake up around 6:30, shower, get ready, eat their breakfast before 8:30. 8:30 to 9:30 is a team building at the lodge before we start getting hiking going. Then from 9:30 to 4:45, we're out there hiking all day, stopping obviously for lunch and to get those beautiful pictures.
And reapply sunscreen, bug spray.
All that stuff, making sure we have it. When we get back to the lodge, we have an hour where the kids can kind of unwind. There's a rec room. There's a field, so we'll bring like frisbees, soccer balls, footballs. And the kids have opportunity to just kind of unwind, talk with their friends that they weren't in the hiking group with, because we have four different hiking groups, so they can share their experiences. Because we'll be in some different areas too, depending on the kid's abilities and stuff like that. Then come back, 5:45, meet with your group, dinner, eat as a group. Seven to 8:30 is that nightly activity. So both nights, we're going to do a bonfire. The first night, smores and kind of unwinding like that, or the second night is that star stories. And then shower, go to bed.
Yeah, hopefully, they will be very tired.
I think they will be. Yeah, we're hoping to get around. They said anywhere from like five to 10 miles a day, they'll be hiking.
They'll be tired.
Yes.
First line eliminates me from going on the trip.
Early wake up. Yeah.
And so the, the cost of the trip for the kids was $325. We did do a Little Caesar's fundraiser and that, depending on the student, was between $15 and $60, depending on how much they sold, to help them with the cost of the trip.
And just some other, like, raising opportunities, because they've learned about this from the beginning of the year. We took over about halfway through the year, but they have all those opportunities. We mention it very much throughout the year to get more interest, things like that, and just say, keep saving up. The teacher before even set up a schedule, I wish I had it, of like payment dates to help break up the cost for the families to make it more achievable for all students. So, any questions? These are more for the kids.
Yes.
Anything, if they have it, bring it. We give them a list of the items that AMC recommends to bring. But they're a really great club and they say, like, anything that they want you to bring, they can give you too. So you just need to ask for it and hand that in about two weeks before the trip and they'll get all that stuff ready for all the kids.
I have a question. You said the cost per student is $350?
$325, yes.
$325 and?
Correct.
And how about the chaperones? Do they pay for their own ways or way or what?
No, chaperones are included in that.
Yep.
So a chaperone would also pay $325?
No, we, we don't, no.
No.
Any teachers don't have to pay, any chaperones, yeah.
And is the school committee paying for any of that? You hear just to get permission?
Correct.
Just permission, they're asking.
But the school committee's not paying for anything?
The buses.
The buses. Yes, okay, I'm like...
Yeah, that comes out of their...
Somebody's...
That comes out of their school budget.
Yes.
And what does that cost, do you know?
I do not have those numbers.
I don't know how much the bus costs.
Yeah.
Do you know? Does anybody know here?
Probably be, probably, because it's so long, probably close to a thousand.
$750, probably.
I would say more than a thousand dollars.
$750 total?
Yeah, $750 to a thousand, I would say, Rosemary, because it's an out-of-state field trip and the distance. And it's, you only need one bus, correct?
Correct.
How many students are going?
Twenty-seven.
How many years has this been a regular trip? I mean, I know that some years because of COVID and last year what happened, but I think I've been on the school committee now six, seven years. And this is something that's been approved. This isn't the first time, and it's been approved every time it's been on the agenda.
I remember going on the AMC field trip when I was young.
We won't share that.
And one of our chaperones, Tracy Pappas, she said she remembers doing this, one of her first years, so like almost 30 years ago.
So 20, 30 years.
Yeah.
It, it's a great learning experience. I think it's like, I think you said early on in your presentation, for some students, probably the first time they get out of the city and go into the nature. So I think it's, it's that, I think part of traveling is a plus to learning and learning things hands-on, as opposed to, nothing wrong with learning it out of a book in a classroom, but I think it's something like this where it sticks and it's something they'll probably always remember, just as both the...
Right, it's those, it's those experiences that they'll remember, absolutely.
Any questions regarding the field trip?
Yes, if any of the chaperones change their mind or... They want to consult the person who had basic training and would do pretty good on a trip like that, just in case.
Dr. Knight, are you volunteering to go again?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we'll let you know, Dr. Knight.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Walsh?
Make a motion to approve action item 24-382. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow the out-of-state and overnight field trip to AMC Highland Center at Crawford Notch in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire, for our sixth grade students at Longs Joe Middle School from May 22nd to May 24th, 2024.
Second the motion.
We have a motion in second to approve action item 24382. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. That is, thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Sorry for pronouncing the name wrong again, all the time. Thank you. Looking forward to hear about the field trip. Don't get lost in the woods, please. That's my biggest fear. All right.
Lots of bug spray.
Now, we are here tonight, joined by our multilingual learner director, Ms. Eva Kelly, to share with us a little bit about the ESL department and the happenings throughout the school district. So please welcome Eva.
Hi, thanks. I just want to say, so happy to be here and I'm so happy to be here and talk about multilingual learners. It's a celebration for all of us. These students enrich our lives, they enrich our community. And I'm so excited I get to talk to you about it, so. Mr. Thompson has, okay. So I do have some props, so I'm going to do a little activity with you, but not quite yet. We're just going to talk about them, yeah, first. I have quite a few slides, so I'm going to probably go pretty quick. Stop me if I'm going too fast. Let me know if you don't understand something. And I will slow down and clarify, okay? So I'm ready for the next slide, yeah. So first of all, I wanted to point out, and I know we all are so familiar with our mission and vision as a district, but this is so aligned to what the mission and vision is for the multilingual learners from the Department of Education as well. So we all, we're all familiar with these and we're all familiar with the next slide, our commitments to our students. Yes, and do you want to go to the next slide? Okay, so we're all familiar with these as well, and I'm going to show you now how they cross over with... with what the vision is for multilingual learners across the state, and that's the next slide. Okay, so as you can see, the vision for multilingual learners, for success for multilingual learners across the state includes English language learners who attend school and which all educators share the responsibility for their success, because the responsibility for these students lies on all of us, all of you, all the teachers, all the staff, all the administrators. They are everyone's responsibility. And they want English learners to have equitable access to meaningful and rigorous learning opportunities, and that is part of our commitment to you, to our students and to our families. Can I go to the next? Okay. And the department, their vision is for educators who engage effectively with our families, who value and nurture linguistic and cultural assets, and are effective and well-prepared and culturally responsive educators, which that is our goal too, and it's obvious through our commitments. Okay. So I thought I would start with a couple definitions. There's a lot of letters, a lot of letters in multilingual learner speak. And I just wanted to go over a couple before I start talking to you about these groups. So the first term I wanted to talk to you about was, what is a multilingual learner, right? These are students who have been consistently exposed to more than one language. Our first language with not English learners are students who were exposed to a language other than English first in their homes. L's are a subset of M.L.s, and they are students who receive English language services, and they're not yet proficient in English. And former English language learners are students who were previously designated as L's, but have attained language proficiency. Am I going too fast? Okay. Newcomers, and I know this is like a hot word right now, and I just wanted to clarify, I've heard it come up a few times. So I just want you to know what a newcomer is, right? And this is defined by the state. Newcomers are any student K to 12 who are born outside of the U.S. and who have arrived in the U.S. in the last three years, and who are also still considered English language learners. Now, these students are very diverse. They come from different countries, they speak different languages, they've had different experiences. Questions? Okay. Awesome. Okay, next slide.
Lots of definitions.
Okay, so the last definition, this is my last definition, is a SLIF. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with this term, students with interrupted formal education. So the state has just redefined what a SLIF student is. So I have it here, it's in your slides, I'm not going to read it to you. I just want to let you know that the one piece that they changed in particular was they used to consider a SLIF student could be an L student who was more than two years behind their peers in school and had interrupted formal education. But right now, they've changed it to prior exposure to formal education that's characterized by interrupted schooling, defined as at least two or fewer years of schooling than their typical peers. So it can be someone who's been in school, but has over time had less, two years less exposure to school than a typical peer. Any questions? Okay, next. So I wanted, before we start talking about our students in particular, I wanted to talk about the benefits of being bilingual. In the job market right now, it is a hot commodity to be able to speak two languages. I think Dr. Knight could speak to that herself.
Yeah, but it doesn't always work.
It does. And Assistant Superintendent Cologne as well, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I love speaking to my students and families, and I love speaking my native language as much as possible.
And I know, Mr. Roach, you worked hard at increasing your bilingual skills.
Si, es muy malo pero.
Yeah, no, I think it's very important.
It also is beneficial to our students in terms of their education. They are recognized at the colleges and universities they attend as being bilingual. Many jobs in education, healthcare, social work, advocacy jobs, and immigration are also based on people who can speak two languages fluently. There are a lot of cognitive benefits to being bilingual. It increases executive functioning skills. It makes people better multitaskers. It increases earning potential in jobs and prevents negative effects of disease and brain injury. Did you guys know that? It's very good for your brain, very good for your brain. It also increases your capacity for empathy because you have those two different mindsets and views, right? Not just one. So next slide. So across the U.S., these are really small, I know, but you're going to have them again in your slides. Across the U.S., over the past 10 years, that's the blue chart, we've seen a large increase in immigration from Haiti. And that's connected to all the trouble and political unrest that we're seeing there. So as you can see, it went from, the bottom line is the number of years. So in 2023, we reached almost 80,000 immigrants from Haiti coming into the United States. Amazing, right? And then if you look to the next graph, that is Massachusetts. So the percentage of L students who are newcomers in Massachusetts, and you can see the large hike, and that is 21, 22. So I wager that it's continued to rise over the past two years as well. Okay, I'm ready, I think, for the next. So when we think about our newcomers, newcomers make up about 16% of all the L's immigrating into Massachusetts, but they make up 50% of the L's in high school. So a large portion of the newcomers are in high schools across the state. Okay, next slide. So now we're coming right down to Pittsburgh Public Schools. So we have an enrollment of 5,420 students. Our first language not English students is 2,066. So almost half of our students speak a language other than English at home. They speak 36 different languages. And we have this year 1,052 English learners. So those are students that are receiving ESL services in school. First year in U.S. students, we have 260 this year. That's just the first year. Remember, a newcomer is considered a newcomer for three years. That's just our first year students. Second year in U.S. is 155 students. And we have 25 SLIF students in the district right now that we've identified.
What is SLIF again?
SLIF is students with interrupted formal education. Too fast? You look dazed. No, keep going, okay. Next, next slide. So if you want to compare like our numbers to the state, first language not English in our district is 37.5%. The state is 26. L's across the state, 13%. And in the district, we're at 18% this year. Next slide. So if you want to know where our newcomers are located, our first year, excuse me, first year in U.S., you can look at this graph more closely when you look at the slides, but 26 ninth graders are currently in their first year in U.S. schools. So that's by grade. Next slide, you can see first language not English and English language learners and how they've slowly progressed up over time. Okay. And finally, this is the final graph slide, and this is showing you by grade in school, how many L's are in those schools and grades, not newcomers, but L students who are receiving ESL services. Okay. Any questions, concerns? Yes.
Curious, I don't know if you know these numbers now, but of these numbers, how many of them are the newcomers?
So that was.
For which grade?
Yep, newcomers, can you go back two slides? So this, the circle, is the grade. So I don't know by school, do you want me to get that? So that's the newcomers by school, how many, the grade? I'm sorry, the grade, not the school. The grade and the number of newcomers are at that grade level. Do you want it by school? I can absolutely get that for you, Lindsay, no problem.
I was just curious.
You sure? I try not to put too many graphs, because they're so little.
This just takes me a little bit to get through it.
Yeah, I know, no, I know, it's a lot. But when you see the slides and you have, I think they'll have a copy, yeah?
Yes.
You can take a deeper dive. And please don't hesitate to email me with any questions, if you have a question when you're looking at the slides as well. Okay, so now I have a little activity. I'm trying to go fast so I could get the activity done. Okay, now, you have to go out of presentation mode.
Okay.
Because.
I think I have to, what am I clicking on? The video?
Audio first, but I don't want them to see the video.
Oh, boy.
We can just do video if we have to. It'll be fine. Okay, now get off the video, though, just play it, but don't show them the video. I know, it's important, really, trust me.
Can they turn it around and make this meeting an email?
Jones is taking.
All right, hold on, Eva.
Okay, it's okay, if you just have to play it.
Audio you want me to click on? Or when I click on the?
I want you to play that, but.
But it's not coming.
Go back to the slide, so they can't see the video the first time.
Got you.
It's a process, I'm telling you.
So I'm going to play it quickly.
Yeah.
And then go back.
To the slide.
The slide.
Yeah.
I got it now.
So start it, but then go back to the slide so they can't see it.
Looking the ball and running with it, she's asking Grammarly.
Yeah.
First graph of an email.
Okay.
What a play. Grammarly is an AI writing.
No, this is not what you have to listen to. It's coming.
She's got a clear shot, and it's good.
Okay.
It's a slam dunk, the meeting's canceled, they'll go home champions.
Download Grammarly for free.
Wait, wait, no, it's coming.
I was going to say, are we listening to the ad?
It is.
No.
That's the ad.
That's the ad.
Some things field.
All right, everyone, close your eyes.
Close your eyes, just close your eyes for a sec. The ads, okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, you can open your eyes now, it's okay. Just listen. Okay, stop it. Okay, now we're going to go back to the beginning or hit the video, I don't care.
Now we want the video?
Yeah.
Start it over again?
Yeah, start it over. Now, now you can watch it. So first, wait, what was that about? Who knows? And you can't, if you speak Spanish, you can't answer the question. You can't. So anybody tell me what that video is about?
Don't know.
Anyone? Nothing?
I was far too fast.
Too fast, all right.
Hazte espacio, por favor.
Okay, too fast, okay? All right, well, let's watch the video. Let's see if this helps, having the visuals, okay?
I think that's as far as we.
Okay. So what's the, what's the video about?
Earth Day and recycling.
Helping the planet, who else? What'd you say?
Why recycle?
Why recycle? Anybody else, anything?
Guide to complete, a complete guide to recycling.
Okay, now how did you know that? Did you understand Spanish the second time you saw it?
Un solo poquito.
What else helped you?
Reading the words.
And what else?
The visuals.
The visuals, right? So that, what you just experienced in that short period of time, that's what our kids go through every day, all the time. So I just wanted to do that before I started, yeah, go ahead, yes.
Ian, what, somebody said it was too fast, hearing it in Spanish, for English language learners. My speaking right now is too fast for them to understand.
That's right, exactly.
Same thing, just in a different language.
I just wanted to give you a little taste of it, just a little taste, okay?
Especially us Massachusetts people speak real fast.
Yes, yes, we do.
Can I keep going? Do you guys have any questions about that little experiment now? Okay, next slide, I'm good. So English language development, just so we're clear, it happens every day, all the time, every interaction a student has with a teacher and administrator, other students. And everyone is responsible for the education of these children, including all their content teachers. And this slide just tells you a little bit about the different ways they are getting English language and what the teachers do at the different, two different settings, the general education and the ESL setting. Okay. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about access testing. So that's the test of English language proficiency. It's similar to MCAS for our general education courses and English language testing. This access is testing students' acquisition of language over time. So it's once a year, every student that's designated as an ESL student, even if they don't participate in services because the family has chosen not to, they still have to take access testing. It happens between January and February each year, and we test across four language domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then we get scores. These scores just came out. We get an oral language score, a literacy score, and a comprehension score, as well as an overall score. And you can see the breakdown when you look at the slide of how the scores are attained, how they, they take each of the four scores to create these four scores at the bottom for us, so we can place them in the appropriate English language classes. Okay. So these are the four levels that students go through as they're attaining language, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. When students score either a 3.9 literacy and a 4.2 composite score, they're considered no longer eligible for ESL services, but we monitor them for four years. So when they reach that level, they're at the expanding stage. Okay, any questions? Okay. So this is our student progress toward language proficiency. So this chart is showing you how many students, the blue column shows you how many students moved from one tier to the next in 2021, 22, and 23. So you can see that the students who are increasing their levels is going up. Students who stayed the same went up a little also, but students who dropped a level has gone down. And we just received access scores, but I haven't, I want to like look at them really well and be able to present to you specifically where the students are, because we just get scores, right? We don't get charts or graphs or anything for that.
And the data's embargoed still.
It's, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
We'll share that in the fall, when we present our MCAS update in the fall. So you'll have that information.
Okay. So in the past three years, to meet the needs of our students, we have done a number of things. We've increased the number of ESL students by 17 over the past three years. So we have a total of 35 students servicing, teachers servicing 1,035 ESL students across the district. We've offered co-teaching PD opportunities to support multilingual learners in general education classrooms. The district has provided PD on the WIDA standards and language development for all staff. And we've added effective translation services to increase communication with our parents. And that is not a typo, that is the name of the translation service. Any questions? No, people say that to me all the time. All right, so the next slide is about ESL teacher support. So for our elementary and middle school, we use model curriculum units. Those are live links for you, the blue link, so you can go in and look at the units. At Pittsburgh High, we do have National Geographic Sinage Edge Curriculum, as well as Get Ready and Get Reading for our newcomers, and that's through Vista Learning. Elevations is a platform where we store all our ESL student information. And any teacher in the district can go in and look at information about their Ls, understand where they're coming from, what their scores are, what their levels are, what they can do, and what they are reaching for. And we also have Flashlight and vocabulary at the different levels. And these are applications that help students work on their oral language proficiency.
What's vocabulary?
Vocabulary. It's similar to Flashlight where students go on and they practice their speaking. So we also have WIDA conferences that we have allowed all of our ESL teachers to participate remotely and have access to those conference resources. And we have on-demand coaching from our teacher on special assignment that helps any ESL teacher, any general ed teacher struggling with an L student. Questions? Yeah, okay. So I'm just gonna go quick through the next two slides because it's about the co-teaching initiative. Oh, so the co-teaching initiative, you heard about it from Alicia Baroski when she presented about special education. So we use our ESL teachers in the same way where they're pushing into classrooms and supporting students and co-teaching in the rooms. We also, I did mention the district PD. We have the Pittsburgh Teachers Lounge. That is a live link. You can go right there and see all the curriculums for all the content areas. But Ls, Multilingual Learner Department has a tab too. And you can see the WIDA standards, as well as some strategies and scaffolds for all families. Can you click on the resources for multilingual learners? Because this is a great new application that we added. You wanna push? Yeah. So this is an application. Go to the house. Go to the house in the lower right-hand corner. So this is for all staff. They can go into this application. There's academic discussion activities on the far right. And they can go in and go by their grade level and check out some different activities to increase academic discussion in the classrooms. You can click on one if you want to show them. You're so good at this. Thank you. So as you can see, you can look at this activity that you could do in a classroom. It helps you with sentence frames for discussion, online resources, and also videos where you can look at an example of this activity, which is amazing, right? Do you want to go back out to the ELD? Yeah, so this is the ELP snapshot. So any teacher that, and most of our teachers have Ls in their classrooms, if you push Begin, you can put the student name and their access scores. And then you pick your grade level. So make something up. And you can go in and you can, so pick like listening, you pick one of the domains. Whatever you want. And then you can, can do descriptors. So this tells you where the student is right now, what their performance should be like. And it allows you to help planning for their next steps, like what do we need to do to get them to the next step? So there's also descriptions of the students, instructional reading strategies for students, and also assessment strategies. So if they can't participate in the particular assessment or formative assessment you're doing for other students, how else can you gain access to what they've learned and what they know using these strategies? All right, you guys, all right. I guess we can go back to the slides. Everybody's bored. It's too long. Okay, so the next two slides. These are the ones you saw from Ms. Baroski. So I just threw these in. She let me borrow them. So if you go to this one and then the next one, just the different models for co-teaching. But I just wanted to remind you that we also use this for the ESL students. So next slide. Okay. So in the future, and I've been working with closely with Glenda this year, and we're making plans to make continued support, but also to increase supports for these students. So we're in, after speaking with Ms. Baroski and doing a book study with some of our SPSAs, we're gonna look at adding a process for when we're looking at students and referring them for special education. What particular pieces do we have to look at for our ESL students that's not always the same as a non-ESL student? And trying to weave that in so that we can appropriately identify what their needs are. We're also gonna remove barriers for parent engagement by participating in the Family Institute for School Success, which is a parent program. We're gonna start it at the South Street Early Learning Center. And we're in the process of working that out with our Family Institute for School Success collaborators. It's a whole curriculum. Parents will come for six weeks, learn all about how to advocate and support their students through the, through the school system. And we also will continue our adult ESL classes. We're also exploring other practices and opportunities to increase language support for our newcomers and all students. And the state has recently added a preschool screener. We're now going to be required to screen all our preschool students and support them. And we're still working out what that's gonna look like for the fall. Yeah. Questions? Am I going too fast, Rosemary? Oh, okay. So this is an exciting part, and I'm almost done. So the seal of biliteracy. This is a seal on students' transcripts, and they can acquire this by taking a test to certify that they are bilingual, reading, writing, speaking, and listening proficient in two languages. So English and what are their another language. It enables future employers to identify these students as bilingual. And it enables colleges and universities to recognize them. And if you go to UMass Amherst, you would get 12 credits if you pass this test and have this certification on your transcript. And there's also an even higher level, the seal of biliteracy with distinction. If you receive this and you become a teacher, you get a waiver for your MTELL. You don't have to pay for it. A voucher, not a waiver. You still have to take the test. So over the past three years, 2022, seven students received this seal of biliteracy. 23, 21 students received the seal, three with distinction. And this year, already nine students qualified last year as juniors, and we had 31 more students take the test. So it's amazing. That's great. And that's a testament to our world language teachers also at the high school. So a shout out to all of them. And I think I have one more. All right.
Can students take the test anytime throughout this?
Um, no, they take it, I think they took it in March. Yeah, March, March, yeah.
And they have to be a junior to take the test?
Junior or senior, yeah. That's great news, right? Yeah. So I think you're all aware of our adult ESL classes. We have three sessions per year, eight-week sessions. Typically enroll about 90 adults. And typically, we're recognizing 30 of them at the end for outstanding attendance and participation. If you click, the pictures come. This is an amazing program. We started it right before COVID. And because of COVID, went online with the programming, and we've stayed online because it really helps our parents to access the classes. And I also have to say, this came out of an LPAC meeting. We also have an LPAC, an English Language Parent Advisory Committee, which I forgot to make a slide for. Sorry. And this came out of a request at an LPAC meeting. And I'm happy to announce that two of our parents that participated in several classes, Maria Aguilar and Maisley Castillo, are gonna be our LPAC leaders. So I'm so excited about that, that they feel confident in their English and their home language to, you know, advocate for students and parents. So I'm looking forward to that. So any questions? Yes?
It's not a question. It's a comment. I was thinking as you were going along there, how magnificent their adaptation is and they're being led to excellence. But I, there's a component that I also think would be very gracious is to recognize they're keeping up of their own native language, their first language skills, and recognizing that.
Absolutely.
In some way.
And the seal of biliteracy does do that. Yeah, that is a recognition that they have continued to increase their literacy in their home language, as well as learning English.
It, which ultimately maybe even might be something that would be shared with their, the country that they came from, the teachers.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's a great idea. Yes, that's wonderful.
Unifying. Thank you.
I'm gonna write that down, Rosemary. Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yes, you mentioned, beautiful presentation. You mentioned at the beginning that one of the goals was to expose our English language learners with culturally responsive teaching. What does that look like for our English language learners in the program?
So I think that the new curriculums that we've put in place over the past several years are all, have the stamp of approval as culturally engaging and reflective of our community. Am I, is that accurate? Also, in our model curriculum units, if you take a look at those, there's a lot of work around self-exploration, around exploring African-American heroes. So when you go into the slides, Dr. Knight, if you go into the model curriculum units, take a look at those. Because that's what those are all about as well, like having a welcoming, we want to learn about your culture. We want to understand you, and having the students reflected in the materials we use. Does that make sense?
Um, I also, as a start, also, I'm sorry, you wanna?
I just wanted to add to that, sorry. Even I work so closely together, and so I think, you know, that's a really great question. And it's one that we as a curriculum team fully take ownership for, not just the MLE department. But, you know, part of being culturally responsive is really thinking about, you know, our classroom environment, how we actually set up the space in order to make sure that it is welcoming to all of our students, and how we make sure that when we're planning for our lessons, that we're planning for every single student that is just sitting in front of us and not the, you know, average student, but every individual student that we're really thinking about that student. And then, you know, most importantly, really celebrating the individuality of students and recognizing, I think that, you know, the Black Student Union group that came here and presented today did a really wonderful job of sharing, kind of, I'm sure, what many students have felt in the past, which is that they have not been able to see themselves in curriculum or in content. And, you know, that is a lived experience for me, is not being able to know about people in our history and in our culture, in our classroom space. And I think the one thing that we could share about the curriculum that we have is that we have, you know, autonomy to be able to be more inclusive. And many of those things are actually exist already in the curriculum resources that we have. So there is still a long way to go, right? But I think we're making really great strides.
Very good. I just wanted to add, Zaretta Hammond, with her book on culturally responsive teaching, she takes it a step further. She talks about how in culturally, in culturally responsive teaching, that it's a framework that would prepare students cognitively so that they are ready to acquire knowledge in a rigorous manner, to acquire more rigor. And, um, yes.
I was just gonna say, we definitely use that practice. It's about understanding the science of the brain and how.
Yes, yes, yes.
Integrating and understanding the brain development really impacts like your culturally responsive and awareness and really thinking about how the brain reacts in certain scenarios. So we have had some book studies with different educators across the district with culturally responsive, Zaretta Hammond's culturally responsive practices and the brain. And certainly looking forward to continuing to expand that because it's an amazing resource.
Nice, 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 because I just, just wanted to share that. Once our students leave Pittsburgh High School with all the, you know, the knowledge that they acquire, and they go to the university unless they change things. Because what I remember back then is that, you know, once you go to Pittsburgh State, for example, is where I went. You know, they have English Writing 1, English Writing 2, your first and your second year as freshmen and sophomores. And then after that, there was nothing else for English language learners. So that's why I went to school so much, you know, to improve my English, keep going. Because then it stops there. There is no English Writing 3, or there is nothing else beyond that to help English language learners. So maybe, you know, so not maybe, that's why a lot of other students, you know, stopped there because they didn't, they didn't provide that for them. But good job.
I, I think also we have to remember, it's not just about the curriculum, but it's about our schools and our staff and how welcomed and the long, how much our families feel like they belong in our students, right? So it's not just, you know, the curriculum, but everything we do. Right? Yeah.
Other questions for Mrs. Kelly?
All right, I talked too much. See?
I will share this presentation with you through email, so you have the live links.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Well done. All right. Too many buttons. All right, few housekeeping items or items on the agenda before we get into the last presentation this evening. A couple of things that we need to vote on this evening. The first one is for CAPS Collaborative. If we remember back on April 22nd, Mr. Stevens talked to us about how Air Shirley Regional would like to join CAPS Collaborative. Because they would like to join CAPS Collaborative, we actually have to have an official vote, allowing the Air Regionals, Air Shirley Regional School District to join CAPS Collaborative. And we have to actually have an action item. We didn't have that last time. On the agenda this evening, we ask that you do vote for, to accept Air Shirley Regional into the CAPS Collaborative. Okay? Yes?
Question on that issue. Does that mean that they will be leaving Keystone Collaborative?
No, no.
What does it mean?
That means they'll be joining CAPS. So they'll also keep working with Keystone, but they'll also be able to access the services at CAPS.
So it'll extend, it'll extend their possibility of placement?
Yes.
Yes. The main, the main reason is that Air Shirley is hosting our Deaf and Harder Hearing Program, which we also have, our program is in Newton, Mass. also. So we've expanded the Deaf and Harder Hearing Program to K-6 at Air Shirley. So it's just, that's why they're joining the collaborative. Most, most in Keystone, a number in Keystone are also a member of CAPS. So they're in both.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes.
So that we're only looking at this for one year, so will they have to ask to join again each year?
No, no, they'll be. Once we approve, sorry.
I was gonna, once, once they join, they'll be a member forever.
Okay.
Just, just out of interest, how many roughly do you have in the deaf and hearing program? How many do you have in the district, in the hearing program, the deaf program?
I'm not sure how many are from Pittsburgh.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out if you'd like.
And in general?
In, in general, there are, it's K through 12. So there are quite a few.
All right, so that's on the agenda this evening. The other item on the agenda this evening is, no matter how many times we look at this, we always find another area that we missed on the school calendar. So the mistake that we missed was in November, we did not include the early release day before Thanksgiving as a day. So we originally had 16 days, but there's actually 17 days in November. So that being said, that will move up the last day of school to June 18th next year. So we're asking you to vote on that this evening to approve. And this time it should be correct. And thank you for the, a teacher who actually caught that mistake. And then the last piece this evening that we have for a vote is the 2024-2025 school committee dates for next year. I did have to update that because it was, we forgot to change the title of that. You have the correct version in front of you now. So for next year, our dates are September 16th, October 7th, October 21st, November 4th, November 18th, December 2nd, January 6th, February 3rd, February 24th, March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th, April 21st. March 17th, April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd, and June 16th.
Question, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
When's our last school committee meeting in this year?
This year, I think it's on June, give me one second, I have it right here.
June 17th.
June 17th.
June 17th.
That's our last meeting.
June 3rd, June 17th.
Yep, May 20th, June 3rd, and June 17th, there are three meetings left.
My question might be that we might need a meeting the end of August. School will be in session, or not in session, but teachers will be back going the end of August and September 16th. There's quite a, quite a gap in there.
So, as we updated the policies, Pete, it did come up to, on one of the policies, that we do not meet in July and August. And actually, we meet in September, and there's one meeting in September. I think that's the language that we, we actually looked at.
Right.
So, that's why we went by these dates, because we actually just looked at that policy when we met last time.
Okay, we're, we're always available to call a special meeting-
We can, you can call a meeting anytime we need to. If there's something that you'd like to reach out to do in August, at the end of August, we can do that. And if I see something that we need to address immediately in August, I'll do the same thing. Yes?
Just on the April date? Is it usual to have a meeting during the April school vacation?
It is not.
The 21st?
I think you guys don't normally have them on school vacations.
Oh, it should be-
April 21st.
Yep, it actually should be April 28th. Good catch.
Thank you.
Boom. So, if we, when we vote on that, can we vote for changing the date to the 21st to the 28th? And I'll get a new copy to you. All right. But again, as you know, you can call a meeting in August if you need to, and I will let you know if there needs come, a need comes up. All right. I think the last item for our, my presentation this evening is the second reading of the FY25 budget. So, in front of you, you have a few presentations. You have the full 100, I think it's 159 slides of this year's 2024-2025 Budget Book for you. You also have this email to your school-issued email, so if you want to take a look at that in front of you electronically, you have that, but you have a hard copy. You also have a condensed version, not 159 slides in front of you, that we'll go over this evening. And then the other item in front of you is the line item budget that breaks down all of our, is it 36 lines, Mr. Roach?
270.
200, sorry. Why did I say 36? I don't know where that came from.
Wishful thinking.
Wishful thinking, right? Yeah, 36, sorry. So, the full line item budget is in front of you for you to look at. So, as we go through some of this this evening, you have the full versions, so please take a look at it and ask any questions you may have. All right? Just give me one second, so I can queue up the presentation. 36 would be great, wouldn't it, Mr. Roach? It was wishful thinking, I don't know where I came up with 36. So, in front of you, I am proud to present our 2024-2025 budget. As the first go-around with someone focusing on the budget this year, working with Mr. Roach, it's been an experience. As you all know, we have a different, different funding sources that are now changing, moving into next year, so it gave us an opportunity to really look at the services that we're offering for our students, to continue the great work we are doing here in Fitchburg. So, that being said, so our complete operating budget this year for the school, minus the indirect cost, is $83,400,000. Okay? That's our budget, our balanced budget with all the funds that we need to address for this school year, including negotiations. Mr. Roach, Melissa Rodriguez, also in the business office, and Callie Cavelo in the grants department, have gone through all the 271 line items to really, as we call it, we're calling it officially scrub the budget, to make sure we have all our funds accounted for, and making sure we are properly using all funds to improve student outcomes and run the district. That being said, can you hold on one second, Dr. Knight, let me go through the presentation, and then we'll have any, hold all questions after. So, as we went through the 271 line items for this school year, we were able to identify some purchases that we're able to make with the remaining funds for this school year that will help offset some of the funds that we need to use for next year. That being said, we were able to move $346,000 to buy Chromebooks this year out of ESAR III, so we'll buy those Chromebooks with additional ESAR funds that we have this year that we did not use, that will help offset next year's budget, which is great. Last week, we met with our principals and directors to go over all our options for our budget, and to get their input on the options that they would like to see in our budget. In addition, tomorrow, we will meet with all principals again to go through budget and have additional conversations that I'll talk to you about in a second. As we went through the budget line items, we were able to look at our professional development requirements, and we were able to find some redundancies in line items. So, because of that, we were able to consolidate about $150,000 to add to our general fund. In addition, we were able to add grant funding, look at our grant funds, and look at how those can support the general fund. We made sure, to make sure, all of our funding positions were moved out of grants and are now funded by the general fund, which is very important, because some of those funds, like I said, with ESAR, are no longer going to be here. We also identified purchases or other costs, such as contracted services, to charge to some grants, so we're able to change those line items around. So, with reductions to the non-personnel light items, potential restructuring and shifting of all position, the FPS budget will be balanced, and we will continue to be able to negotiate our seven contracts with all our unions that are up right now. Okay? So, we have the money set aside to fulfill our negotiations with all seven units, which we still don't know what that number is going to be.
If I may, do you happen to have another copy of this? I, I didn't get one.
You don't have, is it the-
No, I have that one, I don't-
Handout, the- The smaller version? Yes, right here.
You have another copy?
There you go. Sorry about that. And then that being said, after going through the budget and looking at what we have to reduce this year, we still had to reduce about $2.8 million, okay? That being said, because of changes in funding, the, the fewer dollars we received with the SOA, we had to look at, for next school year, reducing 35 positions for next school year. So, right now, tomorrow, I'll be meeting with all my principals to actually review what those 35 positions will be. We came up with a list of positions, and we shared it with our principals last week and our directors. We'll be meeting with them again tomorrow to finalize that list, and then I'll be coming back to present those 35 position reductions to you at the May 20th meeting. That being said, we will, we, our goal is not to eliminate anybody's position, meaning eliminate the person. We feel that based on those 35 positions that we have to eliminate, we'll be able to take those staff members and move them into other positions that we have open. Again, right now, we will be possibly having some reductions in staff, but not at 35. Okay? So, we're looking at positions, not people. So, I'll be presenting that information to you on the 20th. I'll be meeting with the union next Tuesday to go over our possible position reductions, and then look at exactly what members that will affect. So, I'll be working with them next Tuesday to go over that. Dr. Knight?
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Thompson. I, I know you're doing a lot of work here with this, and I appreciate it very much. But just thinking a little bit about equity. Equity, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. My, my concern is, is that when we, when we're going over the budget, how come it's not, I guess the way I want to put this is, so we do review and approve different contracts, heavy contracts, if you will, heavy-loaded contracts, you know, people that, that make a lot of money, if you will. We do those first, and then, when it's time to do the budget, I'm just wondering if there's some way we could do it together, you know, to make things equitable, because it seems like, you know, we invest a lot of money, and I'm not saying nobody don't deserve it, but then when we get to the, the people that are sitting next to the students, there's not enough money there, and then we have to come up with other alternatives, like you're saying. How about if all that was to be done at the same time, you know, that when we prepared a budget, no contract was already, you know, passed, right? So, we would have more money to be able to, I don't know, to me, make it more equitable.
Yeah, so-
You know what I mean? And I, and, and this is with all due respect, I don't mean to, you know, I'm just saying to make this more equitable.
No, so-
Did that, it makes sense?
Yeah, I think I, so, I, I think what I'm understanding, so I'm gonna use this as an example, Dr. Knight, you made administration contracts, let's say. Are we looking at admin contracts and making sure that the rate that we're paying people is fair market value or appropriate to maybe local school districts that are near us, or what a rate is for positions in Massachusetts? Is that an example of kind of what you're looking for? Like, for an example, if you're saying, off the top of my head, all of our elementary principals, right? All of our elementary principals right now make anywhere between $125,000 and probably roughly $130,000 a year, okay? For our three elementary schools. That rate is the going rate currently in our area for elementary principals. So, when I ever offer a position, or are looking at negotiating a contract, what I do is I make sure that we are looking at the current rates that other districts provide to their, to their principals or any administrative position, because I have to be able to keep those people and get them to Fitchburg and stay with us, or they may leave and go to another school district. Okay? In the past, I've met with Mr. Stevens, who's the vice chair of the school committee, and I've met with him when we've been talking about contracts, and we've talked about rates or ranges that we would assign to certain admin positions. And these rates, we review all the time. If that's something that we would like to move forward, we're bringing to the entire group, we can definitely talk about that moving forward. The other thing, Dr. Knight, is that sometimes not all contracts are up in a certain year, and those pay rates may not, once we agree on something, there's no ever going back and reducing that rate, but we can make a decision with the rate that we pay people moving forward. If that makes sense, did I answer that question?
Somewhat, but let me just ask this. So, do, do we not lose teachers, classroom teachers, because of that?
Pay, of current pay?
Yeah.
For them? Sometimes we do. Yep, so right now, we're, for example, we're negotiating the teachers' contract with the teachers' union, and what we have done, and part of the work that Mr. Roach has done with his team in the business department, and he's pulled contracts for all of our surrounding areas. And he's actually looking at that to see how competitive our rates are in Fitchburg to keep and retain, and also attract educators. And Mr. Roach, do you want to just share a little bit about the information that you did find on our current, our, our current salary and what we're trying to negotiate right now with the unions?
Yeah, I mean, we, like you, you're bringing up, Dr. Knight, we have the unknown of seven contracts that are not ratified at this point. That is unusual a little bit when you're building a budget, because it's an unknown on your personnel lines, which is about 70% of the overall budget. What I would say is, in terms of looking at, just using the, the unit for teachers, you know, the professional staff, Unit A, 560 members, we have looked at our comp districts, comparable districts, we, we're using 10 that are regional, so they're local to Fitchburg, they're either adjacent to the city, or, or they're very similar to Fitchburg in terms of the demographics, or the size, or things like that. And we have seen some things that have shown us that we need to try to address a couple of aspects of, of the teacher pay in particular. The vast majority of our teachers are at the highest step, which is Step 8 in our teacher contract, and, and, you know, that's an area that I think we're looking at, because we want to be competitive. We want our teachers to be comparable to, at least comparable, if not better, than, than what their peers and colleagues might be in other communities. Again, I, I also think that, you know, the, the schools that are classified as gateway cities, you know, Fitchburg is an example of one. Fitchburg Public Schools, you know, certainly the, the challenges are different and greater in many cases, too. We saw a great presentation from Ms. Kelly tonight, you know, and I, as I was looking at that, I was thinking about, you know, our, our students who are, first language is not English, so much higher than the state, and really, if you took the gateway cities out of that, it would be dramatically lower. So, those 23 communities, however many gateway cities there are, really skew that, and it's those communities, more than the other 330, that really have a challenge. So, again, I think we're looking at trying to do the best we can, you know, again, as, as Mr. Thompson said, we, we started this budget with a $2.8 million deficit. Have to find that some, we have to provide a balanced budget to the school committee, to the city, and it's been challenging to do that, you know, in various ways, because as noted, the vast majority of our budget is in staffing, is in personnel costs, so that's why we have to look at some of, you know, that last bulleted item there.
So, so I, I think that, kind of to summarize what Mr. Roach is saying, is that we are looking at our teach, our, our local teacher contracts around the area, our paraprofessionals, our custodial, our clerical, our nurses, to make sure we are competitive, so we can keep staff in and also attract them to Fitchburg. So, that's the work that we've been doing in the last few months to actually prepare for the negotiations.
Okay.
All right. So, again, just quickly, on May 20th, I'll come back and I'll update you on those positions that we will be reducing, okay? So, you'll have that next time. All right, Mr. Roach?
Yeah, so in terms of additional positions to the current staffing that we have, we're about 1,005, I believe, total staff, Fitchburg Public Schools. We aren't proposing any additional staff this year. I think the good news is that when the Chapter 70, that Student Opportunity Act funding was, was better, in the previous three years, we were able to add, add 125-plus staff to address class sizes, to support special education, to support multi-language learners, to address safety concerns, you know? So, we've added that across the board, and I know we've presented some of that distribution to you in previous meetings. The city budget, we, the Fitchburg Public Schools budget will- The city budget, the Fitchburg Public Schools budget will be sixty-five percent. I received this today from the city auditor. One hundred sixty-nine million, seven hundred thousand is the city of Fitchburg budget, and again, Fitchburg Public Schools comprises sixty-five percent of the overall city of Fitchburg budget. We will look to increase capital funding. We have a lot of projects that have been, what we refer to as deferred maintenance, maintenance that has been put off. We are in a cycle right now with ESER funds to be able to do a lot of those projects, but we will need to supplement somewhat, you know, with some of our own funds. We can only do a hundred fifty thousand per project, otherwise, it becomes the city's burden, but we will do what we can to try to address some of the building needs that we have. We also are adding curriculum to the general fund. We've been using ESER funds for the past three years, and a significant upgrade to the curriculum across the K to twelve, especially in math, English, those studies, science, but also support materials for special ed and language learners. So, that's nine hundred thousand dollars that gets added into the general fund. We do need to look at reducing our substitute teacher line. We're looking at about one-point-two million, one-point-three million at the end of the year on subcosts, which is just really high, you know, it's exceptionally high. So, we have to look at that, otherwise, you know, that thirty-five becomes a higher number. And we are adding field trips to all school sites this year, again, with the ESER funds, you know, that's been a great tool to support a lot of these enrichments, and we don't want that to go away. I mean, you know, we heard about the power of that trip to DC and the excitement of the AMC trip that's coming up, so we want to be able to maintain some of that type of experience for our kids and staff. So, we're adding field trips as a separate line item to every budget if we move forward. The next slide shows our overall budget, the total salaries. Now, that just is the teachers who are moving over a column potentially, meaning they maybe started out as a bachelor-degreed person, but over the past year or so, they've accrued enough credits, fifteen, maybe thirty, where they move over to another column in the contract that adds more pay to their annual salary. In addition, it does add their steps. So, quite a few folks in the teachers' contract, but also paraprofessionals, clerical, custodial, nurses, will increase a step for years of experience, and that does include longevity payments as well. Total expenses are listed there. Again, I noted the curriculum, some of the substitute and other things, and then transportation, we have reviewed a number of times. So, the actual amount is less than eighty-three four hundred thousand, because we know we do need to, we have seven contracts that are not completed, so, you know, we have to be able to have some flexibility there, and we also have Student Opportunity Act funds embedded into the overall budget that would address additional cost-of-living increases potentially as well. So, that isn't the only amount, but it is lower than eighty-three four, eighty-three million, four hundred thousand, because, again, we don't have finalized personnel lines in our budget yet, because we're still negotiating contracts across the school system. If we continue on, this is just a snapshot, so your budget book, you do have as a packet in addition to what was emailed last week. The line items are added into the packet that you have. Just a quick walkthrough on it, will show you that there is a table of contents. Yep, it is a hundred fifty-eight pages, I think it's actually one fifty-nine. We walk through, and we see that the superintendent has an overview letter on the next slide that shows, you know, the general, that talks about, you know, the themes and the focus areas. As you get into the budget book, each school is highlighted in addition to the budget sheets and some of the information that we've already presented twice before and at resource subcommittee meetings. This gets deeper into the sites, and the schools do a great job of talking, of describing some of the highlights that they've had, in addition to what they're looking forward to in the upcoming school year. It breaks it down a little bit further into the demographics for each school, which is a slide that shows, again, some of the information that Ms. Kelly was talking about, but the racial ethnicity breakdown, the number of students enrolled, the staff-to-student ratio in addition to some of the specific demographics, language learners, special ed, et cetera, low-income percentages. And then, it has a staffing slide, kind of broken out by the various roles within each school site, and then, some capital goals that we have, projects that we've either recently completed over the course of this year, or have in the planning stages for either the summer or the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then, finally, the last page of every school site is the breakdown of their actual line items, shows you the comparison from FY twenty-four, this fiscal year, school year, to the proposed FY twenty-five, and then, the differentials. You will see some subtractions. Some of that is due to, we've averaged on personnel lines, it could be related to the actual staffing composition of the school is maybe lower paid than what was averaged for the line items. So, for example, if we, you know, did South Street as a school and averaged, you know, used an average salary of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, when we do the breakout of the school, there might be a lot of folks that are on Step One, Two, or Three that are at a lower rate. So, we were able to use the exact number and do some reduction that way without having to actually reduce staff necessarily. In addition to some other non-personnel line items, where we did some consolidation and tried to find ways that we could make reductions there, which, again, are non-staff specific. So, you would see some of those for every school site, and then, at the very end of the budget book, will be the remainder of the actual line item. So, school building maintenance, transportation, athletics, English language learner department, the administrative line items, so there's quite a few things, you know, the school committee has its own line items and a few others there. So, quick summary on that, and glad to take any other questions.
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, maybe Mother Mayor, maybe you know something about this also. I'm just trying to find where the money is so that you can have it for the budget. It's not for me, because I don't even work in the Fitchburg Public Schools. But, so, what can be done so that, because I know it hasn't been used, Proposition Two and a Half for quite some time, you know, that we need to involve the city, I don't know, you know, the Mother Mayor, the councilors, because that's the money that could be used towards, you know, supporting our number-one customer, which are the students. Does that make sense?
So, I think you're referring to a Prop Two and a Half override.
Override.
Which would need to get approved through the city council to go to a ballot where the voters would then vote on that up or down.
Prepare for next year, when we would not have, you know, the ESER funding, and, you know, we'll be in a deeper hole, if that, you know, makes sense? I'm just asking, you know, I don't know.
That's, that is something that could happen, and it would be ultimately at the will of the voters.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think if I could jump in, you know, challenges for this year have been hundred-one million dollar foundation budget, seventy-seven million comes from the state. The previous years, the state had been increasing the amount of Chapter Seventy funds to Fitchburg as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, which is supposed to support communities like Fitchburg especially, high percentages of students who are in first language, not English, high percentages of students, low income, high percentage of students, special ed. That reduced from seven million and six-point-five million to three-point-one. So, right out of the gate, on January twenty-sixth, we had three-point-five million dollar gap day one.
That we all...
Really kind of figuring out...
We got those numbers, and I went, is this for real?
And it was everyone.
Everyone.
Across the state.
Across the state.
Fourteen million from twenty-eight. You know, that's just one example of another community I know that's, our deficit was two-point-eight million, Worcester's is twenty-two.
Twenty-two million.
They're much bigger than us, obviously, but their percentage of their overall operating budget is almost five percent, whereas ours is about two-point, you know, seven, or whatever it is. So, it's been challenging, and to your point, Dr. Knight, Fitchburg, where our net school spending, get to that amount, that's what the history of the school district has been. The conversations around Two and a Half overrides or other things like that are certainly a larger discussion, for sure.
Yes.
I am sure this is redundant, and that you guys have considered these options, but I'm just curious, are the positions that we're talking about trying to fill with any teachers or pairs, or anyone to try to reduce any loss of personnel? Are those more administrative in nature?
No, so those positions we're looking at would basically be around looking at people who are retiring and being able to move those people into those positions, because we have teachers retiring. The other piece we'd have to, we're looking at is people who are on emergency licenses that don't actually have a license for next school year, and we're looking at those positions. And unfortunately, there are some teachers that will no longer be with us in schools because of non-renewals, that principals make those decisions at every school year. So, based on those three avenues is where we would be backfilling those employees, that the positions that we do eliminate.
Then, I don't have any other questions then.
And there's, yes, some positions, we haven't been able to find anyone throughout the school year, so...
Well, that just took, that took care of the rest of my questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, Rosemary?
A slight minor consideration is I heard you say you would like to reduce the subbing which you had increased substantially to meet or exceed surrounding areas. But if you don't have the necessary subs, and if the teachers are out, I think what the school does, it goes to asking teachers to fill in for subs, and they get extra pay.
That's currently what's being done this year.
That's what we do.
That's right.
Yeah, so you might see how that works out financially. Do you know what I'm saying?
We have, we've definitely seen, and...
It's very expensive, Rosemary.
It's more expensive?
Yeah.
And we haven't been able to fill a lot of the subpositions.
Correct.
So, we've had to do that.
True. It's a challenge, for sure, in terms of what you said, Rosemary. I think one of the things that Superintendent Thompson was talking about is, you know, trying to address positions through attrition, resignations, retirements, urgency licensed folks that you just can't continue on, because they wouldn't have the qualifications, and maybe some redistribution of some positions. Addressing the sub factors is certainly another challenge that we'll have. I think, again, we started at a two-point-eight million dollar deficit and really tried to figure out, how can we make sure that classroom instruction, classroom teacher positions not affected, ESL positions not affected, special ed not affected, the safety sort of mental health support staffing not changed, and, you know, what we've presented does that. It does that without, you know, impacting those areas, which I think somebody just said, the customer is the student, their experience is critical, and, again, it's been certainly a challenge to be able to do this in a way that gets us to that point.
And just what Jeremy said, all those positions we talked about, the ESL, the special education, the mental health, the safety, that's all what we believe in, the work that we have outlined in our strategic plan and our Student Opportunity Act plan, we really made sure we didn't touch those, because that's what our students need.
Just to put some matter into the thought matter, I recall, and it appeared to be an extremely successful system at one school where I was, where they had teams of teachers. So, that if one teacher, let's say, teams of four teachers, they all covered their material, but they knew what each other was doing in the classes, and if one teacher was out, the other three could cover easily. It's just, it's a thought, but for some reason, that system was broken up where I'm speaking of, and I know a lot of teachers were disappointed, because they enjoyed the comradeship of shared teaching, and I have to say.
Thank you, Rosemary. Dr. Knight?
One last thing. Please remember that differences in opinion is at the heart of American democracy.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So, when I say something that may seem outside of the box, please don't think I'm trying to attack anyone. I'm just looking for where the money is.
Yeah.
To be able to do what needs to be done. You mentioned before, Superintendent, that when you went through line-per-line item, that you were able to save quite a bit of money, I forgot the number, right? So, I'm just thinking about, for example, I know I met with you before with the compliance personnel for grants, and, but it's somehow, this was more public, you know, and we knew when there was the meetings, and we could go, and we would find some more report, and you could look through that. Maybe you do, I just don't know about it. Maybe you can find some money there also, because that's why there's compliance committees, personnel, so that they can be looking at what's going on, and, you know, maybe that's another area that you could find some more money. So, something could be done about that, you know, I think you would be able to, you probably would be able to find some more money.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. And that's what, you know, the work that Jeremy and his department has done, when I said scrub the budget, they've gone through each line item. For example, we looked at some line items where we had, we had written down in two line items, a certain professional development that we were going to pay for, and we're like, wait, it's in that line item, so we were able to say, oh, we already have that accounted for here, so we were able to take those funds and move them to general and use them in other ways. That's how we got the additional funding for the Chromebooks.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, and I want to thank Mr. Roach and Melissa Rodriguez and Callie Cavello, they've been really crunching these line by line. There's been a lot of meetings and a lot of late nights spent on this, so I appreciate all the work the team did.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I appreciate the hard work, all those line items, and knowing that you also made sure you kept money available with the negotiations.
Yeah, we had to.
Yeah, I mean...
We're not cutting any programs.
No.
No.
That's something we've done in the past, and we're not doing it this year. We worked too hard to get back music and...
No.
...art and drama.
Just an aside, on last Friday night, I went down to the Groton Music...
Yes, yes, yeah.
School of Music, my hop teacher was a presenter there, and so, anyway, the gentleman that came out to greet the audience at the first time, first greeting, said that he, they're doing a tremendous work, they're going to be very effective in the area, but they said they helped particular schools, and they mentioned Fitchburg.
Yeah, they do.
They do, they work in Fitchburg.
We do, and we're actually, to steal this, I'll be coming back to you next year with more information on this, but when the new Crocker opens beginning in 2025, they'll be working with us to actually bring more music opportunities to our elementary students.
That's what they said.
So, more to come.
Well, that's what they said, and they said, is that okay with you folks?
Yes.
And the whole audience clapped, so it was nice.
Yeah, they've been great partners to work with.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would like to be in the loop with all of that.
Right, yeah, I'll do some, we'll do a presentation in the fall about that.
Okay.
Coming soon.
Thank you.
All right, so that is a line item for your approval of the budget for next school year. All right, so that is a line item for your approval of the budget for next school year. Moving on, a few more items, and I apologize, I know it's past eight o'clock. So let's see, so we have.
I was going to say it was past our bedtime.
It's past your bedtime. Some of us it is, yeah, some of us it is.
Halfway through the first period, Jim.
Yeah, I don't even want to know what's happening right now. So we have three donations. The first donation is for $900 from the Freemasons to South Street Early Learning Center for tree saplings to be planted around the playground area. The next is in the amount of $2,500 from Bob's Discount Furniture to South Street Early Learning Center. These funds will be put towards the school activities at South Street Early Learning Center for the 2024-2025 school year. And then the last donation is $1,500 worth of books from the Worcester Area Mission Society for Crocker Elementary School students in grades two and three. I have one grant to submit this evening. It's for the Interpreter and Education Training Grant by the Mass Department of Education in the amount of $30,700. The benefits will be able to train our staff in the district to be translators for our families, and there's no requirements for us to receive the funds, except to apply. And then the last one is a grant to accept, and this one is, this grant is from the Commonwealth, it's called the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative, the CPPI, from the Massachusetts Department of Early Education in the amount of $50,000. This grant opportunity will be helping us develop partnerships between school and district in local private early education and care programs to expand access to high-quality preschool within the district, with particular attention to addressing existing barriers, including not limited to cost and access to special education services. And the requirements for the district are to develop a program and design and implement required services for the expansion of access to affordable quality preschool. What this means is that this is a $50,000 planning grant to see if we can expand preschool services for our youngest learners in Fitchburg. So right now, we are working with MOC, and we'll be reaching out to them to actually plan what that could possibly look like in the future. It's just a planning grant right now. We don't know if it's possible to do, but we will be working on that with them in the next couple of months, and we'll report it out in the fall, kind of where we're at. Okay? That's all.
Mr. Thompson, did we withdraw 24383?
We did. I'll bring that to you next time on March 2020th.
Okay.
May 20th.
Did I say March, May 20th? Again, it's 816.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Thompson. Okay, so I would request a motion to hold 24383 for the next meeting.
Motion to hold 24383 until the May 20th.
Second?
Or committee, any?
Okay, motion in second to hold 24383. Any comments or questions on the motion? All up?
In favor?
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
I'll make a motion then to bundle 24384 through 24392.
Should include.
We have a motion to bundle 24384 through 24392.
Our second?
Motion in second to bundle. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion, motion to accept 24384 through 24392.
Motion to approve the bundle and a second. Any comments or questions on the motion? And are we all in approval?
Yes.
Yes, okay, any opposed? No, okay, very good, thank you so much.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn. I will take that under unanimous consent and.